Twenty-three, I call this meeting to order and will note for the record a quorum of members present. Commissioner Kipley is absent today. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone to silence their phones and if you plan to speak at public comment, if you would please sign in on the sign-in sheet in the corner. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second? Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a request by any commissioner or any member of the public to remove any items from the consent agenda. Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second? Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, takes us to regular business. First item, item ten, is a public hearing to consider a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for Pilot's Roadhouse. Kim, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Christensen with the Auditor's Office. We have received an annual 2023 retail on and off sale malt beverage and SD Farm wine license application from Pilot's Roadhouse. This license would allow for the sale of malt beverages and S- South Dakota farm wine at their establishment located in Minnehaha County. The application was sent to the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney, and Planning Department for review. No objections or concerns were reported. The fee for a new license is $300 plus a $55 publishing fee, with $150 being sent to the Department of Revenue and the remaining funds staying with the county.
All right, thank you. So this is a public hearing. Are there, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this license? You can come to the microphone if you just could identify yourself, please.
I am Mike Bandreen. This is my first application for alcohol license or malt beverage and South Dakota wine license.
Okay. Any questions for the proponent? Anything else you'd like to say?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Is there anyone here opposed to this application? All right, then you probably don't have to get a, give a rebuttal. You can sit down. Any questions by the commission? Now I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the-
Second. Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, the next item is a public hearing and second reading for rezoning number twenty-three dash zero four to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance from Minnehaha County to rezone from the A1 Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential. Mason, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mason Stephan from the County Planning Office. As explained, this rezoning was submitted to rezone from the A1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District. Currently, the property is a one fifteen-acre residential acreage with one single-family dwelling that is located on 478th Avenue, approximately seven miles west of Garrettson. Given that this is a rezoning to the rural residential, it would allow for this residential development and subdivision of the proposed property, and since the rural residential zoning district has a minimum lot size of one acre, it could have the potential to add up to fifteen acres. But the petitioner is, as of now, requesting six, which I'll go down to the site plan so we can see that, six lots that are being requested. At the June 26, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, several neighbors to the subject's property expressed their concerns with the proposed rezoning. These included traffic concerns, concerns regarding the preservation of farmland, and concerns regarding the use of building eligibility's. Ultimately, the Planning Commission did unanimously vote to recommend denial of the rezoning request, and action should be taken to either vote to approve or deny the proposed rezoning ordinance amendment, ordinance rezoning twenty-three dash oh-four. And then I'll just go through a couple of the pictures here again, just so we can get an idea of where the, what the property looks like. So this is the existing driveway up to the residence, and there is additional driveway on the south part of the property that is the one being proposed in the site plan here. So you can see the one. And the site plan is using the south access. The one in this picture is the one farther to the north on the property. And then this is just looking at the field that is on the property, looking at that same field to the north. Here's the existing house that would be torn down if the rezoning was approved. And then just one other thing I will note, since this is, the petitioner is proposing more than four lots in the subdivision, if the rezoning were to be approved, the petitioner would still need to apply for a preliminary subdivision plan through the County Planning Office. And at that time, it would go through the Planning Commission and County Commission again. And that, and that would be where they'd submit more detailed drainage plans, road plans, and lot layouts. But at this time, we are just approving the rezoning, or considering the rezoning, I should say. But I am available for any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Mason? All right, well, thank you. So this, since this is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak in, as a proponent for this?
Good morning. My name is Peter Bendorf. I'm the petitioner on this proposed rezoning. As was articulated earlier, or by the Planning Office, we would be submitting a detail, more detailed subdivision plan if, if the proposed rezoning is approved. And that, of course, will include the attributes and the, and the expected mutual covenants among the six lots, so as to preserve the maintenance of the road. There's some features that are, that we expect to incorporate into the plan, such as a circulating water system, which will provide geothermal heating and cooling capability to each one of those lots, making six, six lots with individual, single-family homes on them, all of them total electric, which, of course, complies with what the general flavor of the future is going to be like with, without having propane or natural gas or things like that being used to support the lots. In addition to that, the, the lots will individually be perk-tested, of course, to support the, the inclusion of the waste handling facilities for each home. As the, as was explained to the commission a few minutes ago, or through the record, there were some objections made at the zoning meeting. However, the quote interference with agriculture unquote was not articulated with any definition. It's arguable that if you look at, if, if you were to look at the entire section that this lot is located in, you would see approximately eighteen separate lots that have been developed. A few of them have been grandfathered in to have the, to comply with the one in forty housing eligibility's, but many more of them have just been housing eligibility's cut out of the existing agriculture, which is around the, surrounding the proposed site. The explanation of that, or why I'm bringing that up, is because, again, there's, there's no farmland that would be, although this is zoned agriculture, there's no farmland that's currently farmed that's going to be converted. It's only farmland that's coming in from a grandfather of the fifteen acres being zoned agriculture. With that in mind, one of the other attributes that I bring to your attention is the fact that if the, if the plan is approved, there, the tax base for Minnehaha County will improve, because right now it's only taxed as agriculture and it'll be taxed at a higher rate when the, when the lots are developed. And again, there's, 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 there's features in the plant, proposed plan that's, that was submitted with the application that identify how it complies with the forward-looking thirty, twenty, thirty-five plan, which was passed by this commission, the envisioned for twenty thirty-five. At the hearing, or the meeting of the zoning commission, one of the questions was raised as to whether or not the one in, the one in forty is, is affected by a statute, I think it was asked, but it's typically an ordinance, that allows the development of the housing eligibility's of one in, one in forty. As like, alike, as well, it appeared from the hearing, or the meeting, that there was a concern as to whether or not we had to comply with the one in forty over the forward vision twenty thirty-five. And the reality is that the twenty thirty-five plan was passed by ordinance when it was invoked, and thereby it becomes a guidance, yes, but also part of the rules that we have to comply with in Minnehaha County. So, as articulated in the application, there are several attributes that actually support the twenty thirty-five plan. The preservation of agriculture, we're not taking any interfering with any of the agricultural endeavors that are in that area. And, and so therefore, we're not imposing an impediment to agriculture. The issue of traffic, six lots on a road that the state of South Dakota, the Department of Transportation, has now provided with arguably the largest DOT project in the history of South Dakota, being the interchange at I-90 and what is Veterans Parkway, which is 478th Avenue. I would, I would suppose that the, the impact on traffic is going to be, is expected to be higher by looking to the reason for putting a six-lane interchange on the, on I-90. As far as interference with agriculture by the traffic that would come from these, how much traffic are we going to get from six houses and a single entrance onto the highway? I, I don't think that's a legitimate argument. With all those, with all those explanations, I think that it's prudent for this commission to approve the request for the rezoning, with, of course, the expectation and the requirement of the submission of a more detailed subdivision plan, which, yes, will articulate the drainage plan. And as you note, if you look on the site plan, there's approximately two acres of frontage that has been identified as being set aside for community gardens or park area for use or enjoyment of the six lots. And as you note that, or as you see, the area around the creek, which is, which is currently in the floodplain, is, is not to be developed. So there will be a greenway and so forth that will protect the creek from runoff. With all those things in mind, I'm urging the commission to approve the request.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Kerski?
Approximately how far north of ninety is this?
Seven and a half miles.
Okay. And it looks like, or appears that you're planning to adjust the entrance off of the road that, that is, is that a county road or a state highway?
It's a county road.
Okay. I was getting confused when you mentioned Veterans Parkway and stuff, so. Has this been taken through the Highway Department? Would they, for approval on that, or?
It has not been taken through the Highway Department for approval. However, the approach that would be taken advantage of for the new access has already been built by the county when the, if you, if you take a look at the bridge that goes over the creek, they replaced, the county replaced that bridge about seven years ago, maybe five years ago. I don't know exactly when, but I don't remember exactly when. But the, the access and egress to the bridge has guardrails on it, and the guardrails then would, would have interfered with what the original driveway was, which went straight down to the highway. So the deal we made with the county was, we gave the county an increased easement, which is depicted by that abutment on the west side of the bridge. We gave the county the increased easement to be able to maintain the bridge into the future, as well as surrendered ownership of land right there to be able to support the project. And the county then built the access for us on the south end of the, of the lot.
So why would you be adjusting it so much further?
Well, the, the reason for moving the lot, the access down that way was, the difference was going to be nothing as far as expense to build a new driveway or move anything that far south. And the, the property along that south border by the shelter belt sometimes has a, in, in, I would call them the, what the county refers to as the hundred-year floods that we've had, three or four of in the last, in the last four years. There's a, there's a, the, the, the property has a depression there where the water flows. So having the driveway there would be able to, it's already higher than the, than the flood area. It's not even a flood area, it's just a runoff. And that just was a more logical place to put it and not have to interfere with the frontage on the road.
Okay. If I could, one more question.
Commissioner Kerski?
This is probably for Mason, or maybe a combination of both, but it looks like there's six lots proposed, but I remember reading the narrative and I thought I saw somewhere that this would allow up to fifteen lots if it was approved. Is, help me understand the math.
So, we're not actually, that plan that he has up there is now what we're approving today. We're approving a rezoning to rural residential. And he, if you approve the rezoning, he could come back with any plan, and he could propose up to fifteen lots if it was rezoned to rural residential, because it's a fifteen-acre lot and the minimum lot size in the rural residential is one acre. So today, this is the plan, but it doesn't, like I said, with that preliminary subdivision plan, if you approve the rezoning, he could come back with a fifteen-acre subdivision later if he decided that that was more profitable, if it was, if the rezoning is approved, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I speak just briefly on that?
Sure.
The control for the commission is the rezoning plan, or the development plan, the subdivision plan. You can disapprove the subdivision if someone were to come in and say fifteen lots.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? All right, seeing no one, then I guess there's no need for a rebuttal.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to the commission.
One more question?
Sure.
Was there opposition at the meeting? I didn't watch the-
The minutes show that there are a number of people that spoke at the meeting.
Yes, the minutes and then my memo just kind of summarized them into those three concerns, because the neighbors to the south, directly to the south, were worried about the condition of the property and traffic concerns. And then there were other concerns a little farther to the south at the intersection, about a half mile, that they're concerned about the devaluation of building eligibility's, because on their property, they would, they would, if this rezoning was approved, then they would be able to rezone their property, which would, instead of having to buy building eligibility's. So they see it as unfair to allow them to have more housing on their property when they cannot. That's the general summary of the neighbor comments.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion, thoughts? Yes.
Give me an idea of the intersection. What street is this closest to?
That's a good question. I believe it's 254th. Give me one second.
So by Raven up there?
I can help you out if you want.
Yeah, it'd be 254th, yeah.
Would you like to see my map?
The next oil road south of this lot is the road that goes over to Midway, and that's the road that Raven's on.
Yes. Yeah. I was just making sure that it was 254th, but yes.
And then I-90 is quite a ways south. And this is the approach that he was mentioning that is already there.
I don't know how this could be a, if I may make a comment, make the property in worse condition, I guess, when I look at what's out there. But I, I look at all the properties along 274th Avenue and, you know, the development out there is just, is tremendous. We do have our eligibility's that we have to contend with, and I'm, I'm going to go in favor of supporting the eligibility's, but it just kind of goes to looking at the overall plan and the twenty thirty-five and needing to update that. I don't think this would be a detriment to what goes on out there. In fact, I think it'd improve what is, is currently out there. But it does make it difficult when we got competing between twenty thirty-five and our two thousand and, I'm sorry, nineteen eighty-three ordinance that's at eligibility's. It does make it a little difficult, but I'm going to go on the side of not supporting this, just for the nineteen eighty-three reason, I guess.
Other comments? Mr. Bennega.
I would agree that the neighbors that are in opposition to this are concerned about the devaluing of their eligibility's. Until we change that, I think we need to stick to that regulation, so I will not be supporting the change.
Anyone else? Commissioner?
I hesitate, because I think I agree with what Dean said. It seems like a good use of the property, but I would definitely be in favor of continuing to, or moving forward on how we can update the envisioned twenty thirty-five. I'm not sure what the process looks like, but after reading the narrative and doing some research on this, I, it would, it does seem like it would be an improvement to the area and that it seems like it maybe would be able to be sustained. I'd like to explore those options, how we can, without devaluing eligibility's, how we can start looking at changing the plan for growth. So I would, at this time, I would vote against it, but, okay, with those thoughts.
All right, well, thank you. I mean, I also cannot support it. I don't think it would be consistent with the actions we've taken recently to deny small-density kind of spot rezonings. And so with that, there's no further-
Make a motion to deny.
Okay. Second? Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. So we, we're not able to support that at this time.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming this morning. Takes us to item twelve, which is a public hearing and second reading to consider an adoption of an ordinance providing for the establishment of speed zones on the Minnehaha County Highway System. Steve Groan, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. This is the second reading. In April of 2021, a speed zone ordinance was adopted to enable enforcement of speed limits under fifty-five miles per hour on county highways. Today's proposed ordinance would replace the previous one. Since 2021, growth within Crooks has made it necessary to adjust speed zones. The three proposed changes all occur along Highway 137, 470th Avenue. The south change is adjacent to Tri Valley's new K-4 school, and the two north changes are adjacent to a new development on the north of Crooks. These changes were requested by the City of Crooks.
All right, we had an opportunity to hear about this a little bit last week. Any questions for Steve? All right, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone else here who'd like to speak in favor of this change to the speed zones? Anybody in opposition to this change? All right, and then turn it over to the Commissioners then.
Make a motion to approve. Second?
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to your next item, item thirteen, which is to consider a resolution authorizing the Highway Department to submit applications to the South Dakota Department of Transportation for participation in the Bridge Improvement Grant Program.
Once again, Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. This is to allow the Highway Department to submit three applications to the South Dakota Department of Transportation to pursue Bridge Improvement Grant preliminary engineering funding for three proposed bridge projects. All three of these bridges are on the county paved system. If successful with the DOT, they would pay eighty percent of the design cost to design the new bridges.
Questions for Steve? This is obviously a program that we've utilized to the great advantage of the county, or to the citizens of Minnehaha County. Commissioner Kerski, did you have a question or a statement?
Can these funds be used on township roads, or is it strictly county highways? Have we done township?
We've done these on township roads also.
We have, okay.
One note, the third structure listed on County Road 114 currently is not listed on our five-year plan, so we're, have submitted a new five-year plan to the Auditor's Office so that we can include this in the big application. It would be listed under 2028 for design. I worked with Commissioner Kipley on doing that.
Question? Yes, Mr. Blyenberg.
Can you explain the big score?
It's a formula that the DOT uses to rate the worthiness of applications, so it's a competitive process. It hasn't been so much a competitive process for the preliminary engineering grants, but when it comes to actual construction grants, they go based on your score. It takes a lot of different items, the bridge sufficiency rating, the traffic, the detours, the wheel tax. So we have a four-dollar wheel tax. They give you up to five, so instead of getting ten points, we get eight points on these applications. There's about ten different factors that go into the big score.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you, when do they usually respond to our grant request?
These typically come back in the fall.
Okay.
Which is almost upon us, it seems like, so. As hot as it is outside. Other questions? Now I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Motion in a second. Any public comment on this item? All right, motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item fourteen, which is to authorize the Chair to sign a contract between Minnehaha County and the Sioux Empire Fair Association for the management of the fair and fairgrounds. Tom Greco, good morning.
All right, good morning. Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. Hopefully you've had a chance. I know you've taken a look at the contract and the briefing memo. I'll highlight a few key items. I will speak a little, then I'll introduce Mr. Wick from the Fair Association and also Commissioner Bennega, I'm sure is going to say some words. Some of the highlights are, it's a two-year term through April of 2025. This particular agreement, you'll notice that there, there are several changes from previous agreements. It's a lot of cleanup language to make it clear and identify specifically, in one case, what is to happen with surplus net receipts. So I'll talk about that for a moment. But before I do, just indicating again that this does provide for termination of the contract through several provisions that are within it. In terms of those surplus net receipts, it defines them as all net receipts remaining after all necessary and reasonable expenses of the fair and fairgrounds have been paid for or funds have been set aside for such payment. So those surplus net receipts are computed at the end of each calendar year and are kept and maintained by the association as trust funds in an interest-bearing account. These receipts may only be expended as permitted by state law for future development of the fair and fairgrounds and only with prior written approval of the county. If the contract is terminated, any remaining surplus net receipts are paid to the county after receipt, after the payment of expenses, costs, and other debts permitted under the contract. Also want to highlight that one member in this case, Commissioner Bennega, will serve as an ex officio member of the Fair Board of the Association's Board of Directors. There are several notice requirements for their meetings and also the provision of monthly financial statements to the commission office, which again improves and increases the transparency. It's something that's been going on for quite some time, so those will be reported to the commission. Additionally, I do- Additionally, I do wanna end with a statement that each year, the Association will have an independent audit conducted. An independent auditor's report prepared each year. That audit and the report will be provided to the county within thirty days of receipt. And presented to the Commission by July first of each year. One final note, and again, a continuance from previous agreements. Mr. Wick or members of the Fair Board will come back to the Commission between the end of the fair, which begins later this week. Between the end of the fair and November fifteenth to provide an update on how that particular fair went. So before I take any questions, I would like to introduce Mr. Wick to say a few words.
Good morning.
Good morning. Scott Wick with the WH Line Fairgrounds Sioux Empire Fair Association. So yes, we worked through the contract with Eric and Mr. Benega and I have already signed off on that. And we do appreciate your continued support. Am I allowed to go into the fair? Okay, I just want to make sure I didn't digress off the agenda. We do have the fair starting Friday at four o'clock. You had alluded to some of the heat and yes, I'm glad the heat was the last couple of weeks. Forecast is looking pretty good. A little bit of rain that's in the forecast, but hopefully that pushes forward. We have a good lineup with our concerts. We have forty-eight different food offerings and booths that are out there. We've brought on a couple of new sponsors, CMB Equipment and also Circle K. The organization that took over the holidays and things are looking good. We've had good volunteers. We're staffed, we're ready to go. Rides are being set up as we speak and we're gonna kick off Friday at four o'clock. In Melinda's office, I've dropped off credentials for all of you and a couple of other passes that you can use and then she's got the instructions down for that. On behalf of the board, staff and myself, thank you very much for all of the work that you guys have done out there. Mark Krenz has done a fantastic job. We just completed, or Mark just completed, replacing some electrical that. Luckily, it was after the fair when it, when we lost that power, because it runs from our offices all the way down south beyond the Pipestone Discovery Building. So he had moved electric out to do that, so we should be, should be in good shape and moving forward, we just hope for fair weather. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Scott? Well, we're all looking forward to a great fair. It's always a fun time of the year when we get, when we get into fair season, I think, so we appreciate you being here. I, we kind of combined two event, two items here, the really fun fair and then we have this contract that we need to address. Does anybody have any questions about the contract, the management agreement? For Scott? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we'll go back to the management contract. Did you have any other comments you wanted to make, Tom?
No further comments, Commissioner.
Okay. Turn it over to the commissioners. Is there anybody here for public comment on this? Let me do that first. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Gerald, do you have a question? I'm sorry.
I'm all over here by myself this week, last week, week before, anyway. I'd like to thank Tom and Eric and frankly, the Fair Board and all the input that we've had over the last few months. We've gone back and forth with some revisions. The revisions are new language, but it also addresses the fact that the fair has been successful the last couple of years. And it's had some financial improvements, so to speak, and that also then requires us to kind of proactively talk about. I would call it the capital planning for any of the board discussions that we need to have for future development or future conversations. If there's a dip in those receipts, we also need to address that to make some plans, but I think this gives us some sound fiscal procedures and. Roadmap, so to speak, on what the agreement is for that two-year period of time when things may have changed a little bit, so. And the two years happens to be something that we generally. Require for most of our agreements and we're happy we're to the point of signing that.
I would be remiss if I didn't thank the State's Attorney's Office as well, because I know a lot of work from their office went into this contract. Is there anyone here for public comment today on this item? All right, seeing none.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I would just like to kind of shoehorn in here a little bit between these two fair items. That, you know, we would, we have not ignored the work that the task force has done on the fair. There has been a lot of work going on kind of behind the scene since the task force made their final report to the Commission in May. We really appreciate the work that all fifteen of those folks did for over a year. They met to look at the issues related to the fair. They made several recommendations and, you know, basically those recommendations that were that we look into some longstanding issues that related to the fair. And what authority the Commission has and doesn't have out there. And so the Commission has directed staff to look into those issues and I think that we will be coming forward. Here in the next few months, you know, this kind of due diligence to do it well takes a little bit of time, but we will be revisiting this issue and coming back. With an kind of a plan for how to move forward, so I didn't want to lose track of that issue as we talk about different fair contracts. So with that, I'm gonna invite Tom back up for the next item on the agenda, which is the lease agreement. That basically goes hand in glove with the management agreement out at the fair.
Okay, thank you, Commission Chair, Tom Greco, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Yes, this does go hand in glove with the management agreement that you just adopted. One of the key items here is just the fact that it also has a concurrent term with the management agreement. And the rent due, the rent is satisfied by meeting the provisions and terms of the management agreement and other terms within this lease agreement. So no extra monies are required from the fair in that respect for a lease. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Tom? Any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I turn it over to the Commission for motion.
I would make a motion to approve the lease.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that takes us to item sixteen. Which is authorize the Chair to sign a joint participation agreement to provide for county contributions to the link in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars per calendar year. Through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Tom.
Okay, good morning. Tom Greco, Commissioned Administrative Officer. A couple of key highlights from this item. I did bring it forward last week. We did withdraw it for the purposes which I'll explain here in a moment. Foremost, the term of this agreement is three years through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, so for twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. It does provide for a four hundred thousand dollar county contribution to the link each in twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. One of the things that we did insert since last week was insertion of opioid settlement funds and link reporting requirements. So this would be similar to what you saw that the city had in the agreement. We simply mirrored that language and require certain reporting. Because we do contribute, some of our contributions are from that opioid settlement money last year and this year each was approximately sixty thousand dollars. Of our total contribution. At this point, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Karski, who also serves as a member of the board if he wanted to make any comments.
I love the voice change, Tom. Congratulations on that, yeah. The opioid money, I thank Eric for that. He's the one who caught that and the use of that, I think, is extremely appropriate for that. You know, the link deals with people that are dealing with mental health and addiction issues more, more on the addiction side than the mental health side. But so many times you talk about hand in glove, that's, they do go hand in glove. And I believe the link has provided an enormous benefit to our, our community. I'm the vice chair of the board. The mayor is the. Board chair and we've got also Sanford, Navara and the, I'm gonna get the name wrong. Anyway, one more board member and. You know, we're always looking for funding. Our revenues, our reimbursements from insurance has been considerably higher than we anticipated them to be. Initially, we started out all as equal contributors to the agreement. Sanford unfortunately has reduced their funding. It's an ongoing conversation. We're hoping to bring them back to the table at the same level that they were before. It's, it's, anytime you're working with an organization like the link and. To say that it has been a success just based on the work of the four partners, the city, the county, Sanford, Navara, I would say. Is an understatement, so this is a good contract. The money that we're spending, we would have been putting into our sobering center anyway. So it's just a diversion of the money from where it was going four years ago. So urge your support of this agreement.
All right, any questions in the Commission? Any public comment on this item? I certainly appreciate Commissioner Karski's work on the link. He's, that's been a multi-year project and we really appreciate all of the hard work he has done on that. If there are no more comments or questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, that takes us to item seventeen. Which is authorize the Chair to sign an agreement with Summit Food Services to provide juvenile detention center food service under the federal student lunch program. Jamie Gravitt, good morning.
Good morning. Jamie Gravitt, Director of Juvenile Detention Center. Before you today is the contract, our yearly contract for the food service program. We opened it to bids. Summit was selected after the bids and there's an increase of about eight and a half percent this year. I'd ask that you authorize this contract.
All right, questions for Jamie? Any public comment on this item? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Would move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for being here this morning. It takes us to item eighteen. Which is the first reading and to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of hearing for August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three on rezoning. Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. Today, I'm asking you to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice. For a second reading and final, potential final adoption for a rezoning request to rezone eight acres from A-one agriculture to C commercial. Asking to have the hearing date set for August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three at five P M. This item is located within the joint jurisdiction of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. It is, if you're familiar with where the Highway Patrol and State DOT offices are on Highway thirty-eight. This would be the, the property directly to the west. It had, it has gone before the Planning Commission last Monday, week ago Monday. It was recommended to deny the rezoning request by both the city and the county planning commissions. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. But the hearing date would be, for the second reading, would be August twenty-second at five P M at the Carnegie Town Hall. For the city, joint city-county meeting.
What day?
The twenty-second.
Any questions for Scott? Any public comment on this item? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Sorry, I have a new phone and I don't know how to turn it off yet.
He warned us before the meeting started, so. Motion.
I'd make a motion to set the first, excuse me, the hearing for August twenty-second on the rezoning, twenty-three oh five.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Karski is so popular.
It's the same one number.
We could go to item nineteen, which is the first reading and to authorize the auditor to publish notice of a hearing for August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three on zoning. Text amendment number twenty-three oh four. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Once again, asking you to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice to have a public hearing on August twenty-second at five P M. In front of the joint city-county, city commission, county commission. This request is amending the zoning ordinance. It would be. How, it would be adopting regulations on how we deal with vacation home rental, short-term rentals. It would be adding that use as a permitted special use in seven zoning districts within the joint city-county zoning ordinance. As well as providing a definition for what a vacation home rental, short-term rental would be. This had a hearing in front of the Planning Commission and on July twenty-fourth, the minutes were included with your. Submitted for your review along with the fact of adoption in the hearing notice. It had a hearing in front of the Planning Commission. We, we've had lengthy discussion on this item. Even before we drafted the, the proposed ordinance amendment, it was approved unanimously by the both joint city-county planning commissions. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, but asking you set the hearing date once again for August twenty-second at five P M.
Questions for Scott?
If I may?
Sure.
From my understanding of the conversation, Scott, I thought that there's kind of two proposals, one by the city, one by the county. Have those been resolved?
Well, I wouldn't say that there are two proposals. We, so I, I worked jointly with both our planning commissions, the city planning commission. And the county planning commission on drafting this. We had a fair amount of discussion on how we'd like to see it put together. This is being proposed, if you recall, our county ordinance. Regulates these all as a conditional use. The city felt that they would like to have that not as restrictive. And so we crafted this to be a permitted special use, meaning that if it meets certain criteria, it would be approved. But one of that cri, one of those criteria would be that we notify the neighbors and give them an, an option to object. And if they objected to it, then it would go to the Planning Commission. I think that was sort of the compromise between what the city wanted and what the county wanted. And we felt it was in fairness to the neighbors, so they could also be aware of what's going on and, and have input. So, but to answer your question, I have been, I have been working with. A, a city counselor that has some different ideas of what they'd like to see. And I think that, I, I know that their, their opinion and their understanding of vacation rental rentals and short-term rentals has been evolving. And so I, I don't think there's a, a big difference now in how our ordinance, how they see our ordinance and how it was approved. But to your point, I think this is going to be an item that there may be some discussion at that twenty, that August twenty-second meeting. There may be some proposed slight revisions. I know that in one of, one of the criteria, it says guest bedrooms. And then further down, it just says bedroom, so I anticipate there might be a few minor changes. Just to make you aware that this probably will have some discussion at that twenty-second meeting. As well as there were both proponents and opponents from the public, which is a little bit unusual when we have a minor, when we have a text amendment. So I anticipate there probably will be some discussion by the public there as well.
Would this apply solely to the joint jurisdictional?
Yes, it only would apply to the joint jurisdiction, that area around, you know, the joint area around Sioux Falls. Just to give you a little bit of a background, in the past eight years, we've only approved what I would say is three. Airbnb type things as we had been sort of administering them as bed and breakfasts in the past. And that just, you know, as you're aware, just didn't really fit what was going on and that's why we're amending this. Because there's a potential likelihood that this use is really gonna continue. It's something that has evolved over the last eight to ten years. It's becoming more frequent, more. It's becoming more frequent, more well, more used. So I think we need to get up, a, ahead of it, address it, and as I indicated, there's really only, there's three of them now that we know of, that we've approved in the last eight years, and we will look at how we're going to be dealing with those. We may go back and ratify those as a, as an air, as a short-term rental and change it from a, from a bed and breakfast to a, to a Airbnb-type use in our ordinance, but I'm working, I'll be working with the state's attorney on how we should handle that, so.
That would probably be up to the property owner if they wanted to fall under this one or that one, or?
We could, we will work with them. There's only three, so it's not going to be a, a great deal of work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? So I'm curious if we, if we pass something similar to what we'll be hearing on that night, and it's different from the ordinance that's in effect in the rest of the county, would that be something you would look to bringing forward to get them to be more similar?
Well, not unless you, not unless they receive that direction from the county commission. There are, there are several uses that are different between the joint city-county ordinance and the county ordinance. One, just, one example would be a CAFO. We, we allow CAFOs out in the county, but we don't allow them in joint jurisdiction. So you can have dissimilar uses in how we administer those within the joint area as opposed to the county area, so they don't have to be identical.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Bennega.
I'm going to love this conversation, because I get changed, the definition of the, what's a VRBO versus a bed and breakfast? I mean, literally, this seems very similar to me.
Well, the basic difference would be, in the industry, a bed and breakfast, the owner is residing in, in that facility and is renting out a room while they're staying in there. A VBRO or Airbnb, the house is basically vacant, or is not being resided in by the owner, so you have access to the entire house. That's the basic difference.
I'm sure it'll be an interesting conversation.
It will be.
All right. At this time, I think if there are no more questions, and I can't remember any public comment on this. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move to set the hearing for August 22nd.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item 20, consider a motion to adopt amendments to the Minnehaha County Commission Rules of Procedure. Tyler, good morning.
Good morning, Tyler Clatt, Commission Office. So for your consideration today is the, just a little bit of background, the commission rules of procedure were adopted back in 2022, and as part of that, the commission is asked to review those every July. The commission reviewed this at our last meeting on July 25th. The revisions that are presented to you today are all the same with one change, and that's number 10 in the memo, which is based on the suggestion that was made during the last meeting, which was to add a opportunity when the consent agenda is being considered where members of the public may make comments on the consent agenda. And that's really the extent of the changes. If there's any questions, I can kind of go through any specific items, but the, again, the request would be to accept these amendments to the rules of procedure.
Yes.
Tyler, could you give us a summary of the revisions that might impact public input?
I will do my best. So mostly, what's changing, so let me rephrase that. Nothing is changing in the way in which people can come and speak during public input. What's being done is being more clear on what is expected during those times, primarily, I don't know if I'll be able to figure out which one it is on the fly here, but the opportunity for public comment is one area in which the intent of that is for people to come and present and speak to item, speak to things that the commission is not considering on the agenda, because during each agenda item, the public is given the opportunity, opportunity to come and speak on that item. So that opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting is for things that the commission did not address during the meeting. And then the consent agenda piece, that doesn't exist now, so that's adding another opportunity for the public to address the commission for items, whether it's the bills or different reports that the other departments may submit, people in the public may want to, you know, mention something about that. That gives them that opportunity and makes it clear that they have that chance. And I think that covers them, unless I'm missing one that I'm not thinking of, but that's, generally, generally speaking, we're adding opportunity and just clarifying how it works.
Thank you. That's what I thought when I had read it, but I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions for Tyler? Any public comment on this, this morning? All right, I'd entertain a motion. Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, that takes us to the last item on our regular agenda, which is to consider a petition to compromise lien DPNO 33797. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. The action requested today is to compromise and release lien DPNO 33797 in full with payment of $5,000. The current balance on the lien is $9,957.96. The petitioner and his wife are in the process of purchasing a home and are expected to close on August 4th. However, they were informed by the title company that two liens would need to be satisfied prior to the closing date. His wife has already paid off a lien in the amount of $877.50, and he is now asking if the Board of Commissioners would consider accepting an offer of $5,000 to compromise and release his lien in full. The lien represents $457 of poor relief and $9,596 for legal counsel. He has made payments totaling $826.41, with the last payment made in 2009. He explains in his narrative that he was unaware of the lien and was surprised to find that it still exists after having filed for bankruptcy in 2020. Both are currently employed and list assets totaling $25,384.07 and liabilities totaling They expressed how pleased they are to have qualified for their first home, having overcome obstacles to improve their lives and credit scores. Their goal is to keep moving forward. The couple has provided copies of the following documents, their 2022 income taxes, which show a combined wages, combined wages of $8,358. They received a refund of $2,107. Their two most recent paychecks average combined earnings of $3,000 bi-weekly, and they also provided a copy of their purchase agreement for the home that will cost $2,000, $235,000. The closing date of August 4th was confirmed in that document. They are both here, if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. The petitioner could speak if he wants to. You just stand at your seat. You don't need to identify yourself, and you don't need to speak if you don't want to.
Chris Ball, she covered everything that I wanted to bring to the table, and she said it all.
Thank you. All right, any questions by the commission? Commissioner Karski.
First of all, comment, just congratulations to the petitioner. It's been a dozen years since the counties had to provide any sort of support. You know, you mentioned in your narrative about turning your life around. Congratulations on that. I'm fully supportive of compromising this lien for the offer of $5,000, which is pretty standard for what we do in situations like this, so thank you for what you've done.
Anyone else? Commissioner Bennega.
I would agree with what Commissioner Karski said. I also appreciate the fact that you've tried to make some payments along the road that you've recovered, so I'd be happy to support this also.
All right, anyone else? I would have to say that, just to pile on, but, you know, we do a lot of hard things, and reading things like what you guys have accomplished in your life was very inspiring to me this week, so thank you very much. All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second. Approve.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment this morning? Or an item that's not on the agenda generally? All right. Commissioner Liaison Reports. Any liaison reports today? This is the time when we all reach for our phones and try to remember what we did this last week. Which is a lot, but, okay, if they're not, Commissioner Blainberg.
The only thing I can remember in the last week was that I got to visit the Pettigrew Museum for their celebration of the 175th birthday of Mr. Pettigrew, I believe. So it was very well attended. It was very interesting. I got to go on a tour. I haven't been there in a long time. It's really a very interesting place to visit.
Good, all right. Number of us were able to go out to the airshow too, which was really fascinating and amazing to be around people who are able to accomplish those kinds of things in the air. There is a, tonight at Emerson Park, there's one of our community engagement events from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. There's a lot of great things going on at that park, so I'd encourage people to go if they're able to do that. Are there any other liaison reports? Any non-action commission discussion? Which is an item that goes away with our new rules. All right, then I would declare us into executive session immediately following the commission meeting for purposes of SDCL 1-25-2, 1, 3, and 4, and we will take about a five-minute break.
And make the motion.
Do we need a motion and a second? Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Oh, there it is, right there.